We call the March sixteenth, twenty twenty one, the Westside Florida County Commissioners meeting to order. That's what you call roll.
Barry, absent. Cory?
Here.
Bo?
Here.
David is absent, too.
We have a call and we will continue. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with our consent agenda and then we will jump right down to the new business. Uh, do some post movement.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
There.
Any discussion? Harry and I'm best to call both.
Cory?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. With that, we will jump down to the new business and talk through. Ed?
Uh, this is Barry. I, I finally figured out the numbers, so.
Oh, Barry, back on. Let me.
Hey Barry, how do you vote on the, how do you vote on the consent agenda?
I, I just barely cut the tail end of that, but I, I would, I would agree to, uh, uh, pass the consent agendas.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, talk through cemetery.
Uh, how do what?
Uh, Barry, we're just, uh, we're jumping down to new business, so we're on, uh, we're talking about the concrete cemetery.
Oh.
Good morning, council members. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Caroline Winger. And for the past twenty seven years, I have overseen and completed the maintenance at the Cow Creek Cemetery just off County Road one, just north of your shop. During that time, we had to trailer costs in maintenance utilizing the Cow Creek Township Fund as approved by the county auditor. I am coming to you today to propose a few improvements to the cemetery's roadside appearance and to also remove a dilapidated structure, meaning the altars, which has become a legitimate safety concern. Given the site is not regularly supervised, the altars have real potential liabilities that we feel should be removed. I have gathered quotes for this removal and was quoted three thousand dollars to demolish the structure and fill in the old vision and full consolidation. In addition to the building we can see here, the building is divided into four blocks.
Sorry.
We can't fix this audio system quick enough. Somebody is here. Okay, any echo?
Ha, brilliant. No, it sounds good now.
All right, sorry, back to you Carolyn.
Okay, in addition to the building removal, we are looking to get a sign and solve to help identify the site. And I have today with me an example sign and think that it has been keeping with the area. I would put a sign with the revised letters. I requested that we be able to utilize the township funding sources for these improvements that we have been utilizing to get the maintenance. I was asked to come before the board to discuss to see whether those funds might be available for these sites to improve them. So let me know if there's anything specific that I would need to use to get me to get these projects going.
Thank you, Carolyn. But do we have any audio?
It's a really pretty sign.
Good deal. Testing, test, 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 test. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, ten. See in there, folks? Test, 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 test.
Interesting.
Is that echo?
Which sounds like a lot of the whole thing.
Yeah. It's, it's, which nice is this is getting replaced soon.
Just not today.
It, uh, they're starting, is it today?
It starts tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Steve, I'm coming to the next board here. Okay, so they have click share listed.
Click share listed as a, oh, as a source?
Yeah, as the odd, as the, as the speaker.
Oh, okay, now it works. Bingo.
What's my?
Yeah, um.
Don't touch anything.
Really love it.
Don't touch anything.
Does anybody got any tin foil?
Hmm, that would help.
I have that, Sarah, I need a tin foil.
Okay. All right, so back to, it's, sorry Carolyn, this is, uh. That's where we typically get these, uh, the funds to the.
Uh, Cow Creek Township has five hundred and eighty-nine thousand semi dollars in the fund. So, that's where we normally take care of and out every year when she does the mowing and whatever. And so this would be approximately, uh, nine thousand three hundred dollars, so maybe allow up to ten thousand dollars to take it out of Cow Creek Township Fund.
Got Christie.
Yeah, just. Yeah, the, yeah, the first.
Working, okay. Um, we talked about this briefly at the last finance committee meeting, and we were going to look more into that. My question, I haven't had a lot of time to look into that, is this an abandoned cemetery?
Uh.
I think there are residents.
Okay. My, my question, I'm wondering, is this a, this an abandoned cemetery, does the county commissioner need to paper the up to top of the general fund?
Oh. Understood. But is, is it still in active use?
Yes, it is, yes.
Okay, okay.
Well, is, is there not a board? Most, most cemeteries have a board that governs them, right?
Yep. Carolyn confirmed, Barry, yeah, there is a board.
Yes, and then Cow Creek Township, which you guys are supporting.
Right.
Is, is considered a nonprofit organization, so we have sponsors for it.
Karen, you want to get involved in this?
I don't know anything about this, so no, I don't. And I haven't had a lot of time to look into that. We were going to discuss it further at the next finance committee meeting.
Yeah. But if we, we, as the county commissioners, do we have to just stop and act as a, the township's board? Or how do we, how do we address the township issue here?
Mm-hmm, okay. Uh, no, I mean, the board of county commissioners is the, yeah, so you're not like a separate township board or anything like that. You know, there might be a separate non, there obviously is a separate board for the nonprofit organization corporation. But in terms of the township board, you, the board of county commissioners is a township board.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, who wishes in the board?
Well, I would make a motion to approve up to ten thousand dollars, uh, to get the church removed and the new sign made and say thank you to the board for taking care of the cemetery.
Hey, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing that, best roll call both.
Cory?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you very much, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next we will jump to, uh, the other new business of Kyle Patterson, Vision Zero Regional Coordinator. Karen on the phone?
I'm right here, uh, through the WebEx. Can you guys hear me?
We hear you loud and clear.
Awesome, cool. Thank you once again, uh, for having me here. Um, gotta love technology to make this possible, the, uh, do virtual meeting. But, um, just a quick introduction here, shouldn't take too long, much of your time. Um, I'm Kyle Patterson, Vision Zero Regional Coordinator, which, um, Vision Zero is a statewide initiative that, uh, the main goal is to reduce fatalities on our North Dakota roads to zero, which is a lofty goal. But, uh, it's one of those that, um, through my position, that education outreach is going to be the main goal for that. Um, there's four of us coordinators, one in Ward County, which we each, um, there's one in Ward County, that's me, of course. There's another one in Morton County, another one in Grand Forks County, and then also another one in Fargo. And each of us, we split it, uh, the state into like each quarter. So, um, my, my section will be, uh, the, like from Rugby, Pierce County, all the way to Williams County, Watford City, Crosby, Botno area, down by Garrison and in that area, also as far south as Kildere. So, um, a sixteen county territory where I will be focusing on a lot of outreach, which education wise, I plan on getting into many of the schools hopefully here this upcoming fall. Um, kind of the main goal is to do one of our programs that we have is Impact Teen Drivers for Education. Um, but one thing is, is that many of these crashes are preventable on our North Dakota roads. And, uh, we just educate people on seatbelt usage, also driving safe, you know, in the winter time, uh, motorcycle safety, lane departures, young driver safety, um, older drivers, just a lot of that, which I'll be doing education outreach. And also, I'll be working with many local businesses in my sixteen county region to try to come up with events to, to, uh, do this Vision Zero outreach. Um, so, but I just wanted to introduce myself to show that, um, that I am here to assist in any ways. If you have any ideas or thoughts for any traffic safety, I will gladly hear anything out for that. Um, and I believe you guys got my contact information that I sent through email, um, to the auditor. But I just wanted to do a quick introduction that I will be kind of in your guys' territory every now and then throughout, hopefully this coming up fall, to do more outreach for Vision Zero, to get those fatalities down to zero on our North Dakota roads. Any questions for anybody?
Uh, number being, uh, filed, it's, um, fourteen people already this year, okay, so. Three, three times the amount we've, uh, had last year. All right, just reading some of the stats that you sent across on the email.
Yep, yep, yep. And, and I can always send you specific stats to like Williams County and like, you know, certain areas that, that, and rural intersections are also some of the, uh, urban intersections, which we can get a lot of this data from the DOT. Um, my position is unique along with the other coordinators. I'm housed in Ward County. But I am, I, the, the funding comes from the state DOT, the DOT for what I do for the outreach side for everything. But, uh, yeah, yeah, I mean, if you have any specific details that I can gladly send you guys, I can, uh, figure out with the stats from the DOT and send that to you, too. Yep.
Perfect, thank you, Val. Either of you all have some questions? Perfect. Thank you very much, Val, for the tall job or tough job to get down to zero, but hopefully we did there.
Awesome. Well, thank you for having me and, uh, have a good rest of your week, guys.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, as long as we're in new business, let's keep rolling. Ed, uh, you've got a waiver of township signature for two projects in Stone Creek Township?
Morning.
Good morning.
I'd be forty-nine, five, a good line survey. As noted in your new business, requesting a waiver of township signature on two of the surveys I'm doing on Stone Creek Township. Through your regulations, you require township signature along with county commissioner signatures. Uh, the township board apparently met here, I'm not sure, two, two weeks ago, and they denied approval of these two flats. And of course, with the regulations, this process, I have to go to the credit that requirement waived, so I can report the flat. Share the information from planning staff is the word that I heard.
Sam's gonna enlighten us.
Good morning, Commissioner Sam Miller, uh, county planning. So, as you guys know, the re-subdivision process is an administrative process. You only come to the board to ask for authorization to sign the flat once they're at their, not their technical criteria and are about to report. Um, we do send out requests for township comments as well as county highway, but it doesn't have to follow the requirement of public transportation process. So, with these two facts, we did actually receive township comment back for one in particular. Um, they had requested to, or recommended to deny based on three concerns. We, I spoke with the township chairman yesterday, so, um, three of the concerns were, first one, increased traffic. Back of street existing lot organization, individuals living in structures without proper living requirements. So, two of those, increased traffic, I spoke with Wayne yesterday as well, um, one of the factors, county road is defined, no issue with that. And then the other one is off of the township roads. However, if the township has, um, a concern for improvement, that's their improvement or maintenance, they have to enter into a maintenance agreement with the applicant themselves. It's outside of related township service. And then the final one, um, the concern regarding living, individuals living in structures without proper living requirements. So Cameron had gone out to the site on March twelfth regarding that comment. Um, no violations were found at that time. So, I spoke with the township chairman and told him we had addressed those concerns. They still, um, are not willing to sign the flat, hence why Ed is here. So, these, both of these facts do meet our subdivision requirements. Uh, it's just more of a township, they're supposed to sign. The chairman said someone from the township board might be at this meeting today, so, uh, I'm not sure if that's in here or not, but if they have, if you have specific questions, they're not. Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, do you want to address any questions? Okay.
And just for the record, too, we do appreciate township comment, like, we really value the comments that they are living out there, they are driving those roads every single day. Um, and that's where I wanted to follow up with their comments, uh, to just say, you know, this project is not, from our perspective, going to have a, chairman, I didn't text on that area.
Yeah. Who wishes in the board?
Where are these apps?
Is there assets being discussed?
Yeah.
So, there, one fact proposal is right off of County Road nine. And then that's going to create two lots from one lot. And then the other one is basically a rearrangement of existing lots, uh, to the west of, in the residential subdivision, and then that's creating five lots. However, there's three out of the five are already developed, there's already homes on there. So really, if they develop on the other two to complete five homes on five lots, it would just be adding two new homes to that area.
I would make a motion to approve the waiver of township signatures for the two projects in Stone Creek Township.
Hey, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing that, best roll call both.
Steve?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Thank you, Ed. Thanks, Ed. Although the, uh, you know, you have Fish and Wildlife Service, that town lake acquisition proposal?
I don't know if he's gonna be there or, uh, online there, but it's, uh, there's a gentleman up there that's got some land next to Alkaline Lake that is going to, um, sell his land to the, uh, the U.S. Wildlife Service or the Ga, not the Gaming Fish, yeah, U.S. Wildlife Service. And it was just part of a, um, kind of a heads up thing there, the utter, anyway, they, they were just kind of letting us know, or I, I believe, I wonder if we don't have to sign off on something because, because it's go, there's, I forget how much it was he told me to, um, four, sir, four, not quite forty acres or something, somewhere around that size. It's gonna take it off the tax rolls anyway, so they need our approval to let, um, to let the sale go through. And I, well, I have, I'm glad that they include us into us, but I don't believe we have enough stroke to tell somebody that they can't sell what they own. Um, so, that's where I'm kind of mixed up there.
Yeah. So we just need a motion in support of this sale and thus removing the land from tax roll? Is that correct?
I believe so, yes. And, and I would be that.
Yeah, who wishes in the board?
Make a motion to, uh, go ahead, Barry.
No, 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 go, go right ahead.
Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, yes, approve our support and authorize chairman to sign.
Hey, we have a motion. Is there a second?
We all have, I was wondering, we all have to sign it?
Yes.
Yeah, authorize all the commissioners to sign.
Yeah, we have amended motion. Is there a second?
I would second that.
Yeah, any additional discussion?
Um, is it, is it, will it be okay if I, uh, if, if it waits till, do I need to run up to Williston? Um, for, to get this signed, or is it gonna be all right if it sits there for, till our next meeting? I think, I wonder if I've got planning and zoning on Thursday.
I will ask the chairman if it's okay for me to sign it, it's, it's been approved here.
That would work with me.
I will have to look at the documents, Jeff.
Yeah. Whoever you have to be, that's a little bit, yeah, Barry. Any additional discussion? Hearing that, best roll call both.
Bo?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes, motion passed. Okay.
Weather mod.
Weather mod?
It's on.
Yep, the, uh, payment, we need a motion of support and authorize a signature, what do we need on this stuff?
I haven't received a bill yet. That's why I haven't seen anything.
Yep, that was just, I just wanted to give, that email I sent out the other day was just kind of a heads up to let you know what, um, what it was going to be and if we were, you know, comfortable with that, because it's going to be a little higher because, well, just because it's, you know, an increase. But then Ward, um, uh, voted themselves out of the project, so, uh, the remaining counties absorbed the prorated cost of that. And I just, just wanted to let everybody know.
And then I haven't talked to Christie about how much money we have in that fund. I should have, but I didn't.
Sure, well, the bill hasn't come yet.
No.
Do we know how much of a change it is?
Yeah, what do we, but.
It's normally like a hundred and twenty some thousand.
Yeah.
Um, we have a hundred and fifty thousand, how much? Hundred and thirty-five, not working, hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Right, and then it, it, it went up to one thirty-nine, seven twenty, I believe?
Yeah.
So it's not really that much of an increase, but I just, like I said, I just wanted to, uh, you know, make everybody aware of it.
Perfect. Yeah, so we don't have to address it at this moment, eh, because it doesn't, there's no bill yet. Yeah. All right.
Can we, can we just, uh, may, um, when, when Beth gets the bill, I mean, can we, can we take care of that now? Or do we just address that later?
When I get the bill, I'll just submit it and then I'll be on the bill record and you guys will just approve it by signing it.
Okay.
It might make the fund go in the hole.
I would, I would guess at that time we'd have to approve a budget amendment of forty-nine hundred, it's seven hundred and twenty dollars or something, whatever, forty-nine hundred.
Yeah.
Forty-seven hundred.
Okay. All right, uh, is there anything others? Uh, the cemetery proposal was all associated with Cow Creek.
Yes, the, the sign is one of those old fashioned signs that come up, and it goes across like this, it says, there it is. It's like, it's like that one, but it'll say Cow Creek Cemetery. And then I think there's another picture if, um, Ryan can get it up the building.
Yeah, um.
There.
Okay. Thank you very much for the visual. Let's, uh, Marsha, why don't you come on up so we can get you in, and then we'll, then we'll get back onto the normal agenda.
Good morning. Uh, I submitted to you guys our year-end report for twenty twenty. Definitely an interesting year. Uh, Denver Social Services, the referrals just kind of came through a great help with COVID. So we saw our numbers, all that's over there. Adquisition, I have two staff left that were there pre-COVID, a lot of them left. We stayed open, they opted that, that wasn't best for them, so. We stayed open, they opted that, that wasn't best for them, so, that's okay to keep them up. Had to actually close for a period of time in the summer, so we could regroup and get some staff hired and paying, but we are fast open and running, the version's open. We did come in under budget, but we also came in well under revenue. Again, our numbers were way down.
Well, it's, it's no, uh, small miracle that they did this year for you guys, huh?
Yeah, luckily we've had, you know, staff one at a time with COVID, and staff works over there.
Good management.
Thank you.
Question?
Well, that's a sign of good management, too. That's our old report, looks good.
Thanks for battling through it, it was a rough year.
It was.
Excellent, well, thank you, Marsha.
Thank you, Ed.
Have a good day. Okay, uh, Darcy.
Good morning, Commissioners, we have an abatement here today for the Hillcrest and Benson Apartments in Tioga for the 2020 tax year. They are requesting a reduction in value from one million, five hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred to one million, one thousand, three hundred. Our current valuation is based off of the income method, the way that we do all the other apartments in the county. We are using the same method for all the large complexes, which is over, uh, twelve units, which this is a two-building, uh, property that has twenty-nine units. One of the buildings is the old school. Uh, no information on how the requested valuation from the applicant was determined, how the requested valuation was determined, it was included with this application. Uh, we base our 2020 assessment on the 2019 local market. The events of 2020 do not impact the 2020 assessment, and we do understand the 2020 market for apartments was depressed, and this is, will be reflected in the 2021 assessment. Uh, that can just provide no evidence to prove that the assessment is in error or has been done in an arbitrary, unreasonable, or capricious manner. The Tioga City Commission heard this abatement on February first and voted to deny, and I recommend the application for the 2020 tax year for Hillcrest and Benson Apartments LLC be denied.
Okay, thank you, Darcy. What are the wishes of the board?
I would make a motion to, uh, follow Tioga City's lead and deny.
Yeah, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing them, that's go call vote. Oh, go ahead, Ed.
Well, I was wondering, did, you know, we've had trouble with them in the past reporting the income for us to use the income method, so did, did they give you the information you needed, Darcy?
No, they did not. Um, Tioga has a very, very low response, uh, we ask for it, so we get a lot of our information for those apartments off of rent.com, or when we cold-call the managers.
Okay, just, just curious, so.
Perfect, any additional discussion? Hearing them, that's go call vote.
D.
Yes.
P.
Yes.
E.
Yes.
O.
Yes.
Yeah, motion passed.
Right, I just have one other thing up here, um, we will probably be hearing, but we have started sending out our notices for, um, equalization for this year, so.
Yay!
Uh, we're doing, um, a little bit spread out this year rather than in one lump, so, um, we started sending them out Friday with a couple meetings that have been on equal first, in order to get our, uh, notice timeline corrected, and then, so they'll be coming out the rest of this week.
Okay, thanks for the heads-up.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, communication? Morning.
Hello. The Wheeler-Roseberry Freeway Great Expansion Project is seeking federal funding again through the Intra Grant Program. Uh, we've previously sent three letters of support, uh, dating back to February 2018, applied for the Intra Grant twice before, the build grant, um, previously, and then kind of now carrying up again with our legislative session for any sort of state, national fund. Um, the deadline for submitting a letter of support was actually last week, um, which was before your meeting. I consulted with Chairman Kevin since we've previously sent letters, and we've pretty much, um, the letters have been similar kind of each time, just the funding purpose is the same. Um, we already had the letter prepared, um, and a signature for receive, so just seeking consent that's used to regret, um, to approve that letter of support.
Okay. Do we need any, uh, any motion? Yeah?
I would make a motion to, uh, approve the letter and send it.
Yeah, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion?
We need a motion to clarify that the Chairman signed it and was there.
So it was ours, huh?
Yeah.
I will amend my motion.
Yeah, you do, second?
Yeah.
Yeah, any additional discussion? Hearing them, that's go call vote.
P.
Yes.
E.
Yes.
O.
Yes.
D.
Yes.
Yeah, motion passed.
And just two other quick updates, um, if I may. Uh, after the parkour meeting today is when we'll begin the project to redo the camera and audio system in this room. As you may have noticed, we already have the new computer, of which we need to figure the audio out. Um, but the system, uh, redo will start after this meeting, and it'll probably take two or three days. Um, give it some time to figure out hardware or software, and then we would plan to stream our first meeting on April the sixth. And then also, on a behavioral health note, um, today at five PM is the deadline for the behavioral health grant. Um, we've already had eleven applicants, as a expectation of a couple more coming in. Um, so it should be pretty exciting review.
That is exciting, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, this is exciting, this, this whole day is an exciting. So, um, okay, Dan?
You have a planning disorder.
Oh.
There's one.
Okay, we have our annual bids, and I'll, we'll do the gravel crushing.
County-owned pits. Last five, sundry, two dollars and fifty-two cents a ton. SP spec seven fourteen, nineteen dollars per ton. Aggregate construction, bu- last five, two dollars, thirty-eight cents per ton. SP seven fourteen, spec sixteen dollars per ton. Gravel products, last five, two dollars and eighty-five cents per ton. SP seven fourteen, spec, no bid. That's our, um, gravel crushing bid for 2021.
Yeah? What do you recommend?
Uh, recommend approval of all.
Yeah?
So if they're in that area, it's on it.
I would make a motion to approve, uh, the gravel crushing bids received.
Yeah, we have a motion to approve the business receipt, any, is there a second?
A second.
Any additional? Hearing them, that's go call vote.
E.
Yes.
O.
Yes.
D.
Yes.
P.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, the bid tabulations for gravel hauling, as we always do, we get bid tabulations, we have five, all the miles, we'd like to accept all as a, as approved haulers under the situation where you, we sometimes get them for emergencies, or, uh, extra timing, rust, uh, grain events, whatever, as needed, when needed. Whoever's low for that distance.
Yeah, what are the wishes of the board?
I would make a motion to approve the, uh, all the bids.
Yeah, we have a motion to approve all the hauling bids, is there a second?
Hold on a second.
Yeah, any additional discussion? Hearing them, that's go call vote.
O.
Yes.
D.
Yes.
P.
Yes.
E.
Yes, motion passed.
Okay, riveted, corrugated metal pipes, pipe through North Steel and contact were the two that gave us a bid, again, what is needed at the time, or if needed, that allows the, the townships and us to have access to this price.
Yeah, what are the wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing them, that's go call vote.
D.
Yes.
P.
Yes.
E.
Yes.
O.
Yes.
Yeah, motion passed.
Okay, and the tire companies that have turned in a bid are Allstate Tire and Williston Tire.
Yeah, what are the wishes of the board?
Make the motion to approve the two tire bids.
Yeah, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing them, that's go call vote.
O.
P.
They could do slow enough.
Yes.
E.
Yes.
O.
Yes.
And D.
Yes.
Yeah, motion passed.
Okay, and lastly is our hourly rates. Under emergency, we can go to these contractors, and hopefully they will come in, and that's what their hourly rates are. Uh, we do have quite a few this year above normal. Again, this is only as needed, if needed, when needed. Hourly rates per equipment, water graders, those are scrapers, crackers, replayer, water truck, actors, lift ladders, dump truck, everything.
Yeah, what are the wishes of the board?
Make a motion to...
Yeah, we got a motion by Derry, to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, any, any discussion? Hearing them, that's go call vote.
E.
Yes.
O.
Yes.
D.
Yes.
P.
Yes.
Yeah, motion passed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Then, on the screen, or on the, yeah, on the screen, right in the corner of fifteen A, uh, the landlords, people that live there, have asked, do you have a, uh, speed reduction? The tax rate's there, yes, sir, right there. What's it at now then? Fifty-five, unless otherwise posted, but it's a, it's a tax corner, so they have to slow down, but, uh, yeah, they got engine rates going on, and, you know, all the stuff.
What do they wanna go to, what do you wanna go and propose by? Um, twenty-five for how far?
Well, let's see, is that black light, you know, say the middle, uh, yeah, say a middle, middle of the quarter.
So we need to do a, a speed limit on the corner, I mean, assign a driver to, prior to, okay?
Yeah, you guys, you guys set the speed limit, so.
I'm assuming it's the same for the other quarter, Keith?
Just this one, right there where his hand is. Right there, yeah, there's nobody up in the other one, well, but, thought we could slow, yeah, make sure, put it on the other way and get them slowed down as they're going west.
Well, um, my, my thought is, I, I feel with him for the noise, but if we're concerned about the safety of the corner, we should probably be concerned about the safety of the other corner, correct?
It, it's not, it's not...
It's not a safety issue, it's just a noise issue.
Yeah.
So fif- you can go around those corners at fifty-five safely? No?
I don't think, I don't think so.
Okay. If we're gonna drop, we want to, if we're gonna drop from fifty-five to twenty-five, then that'll more, you know, even if it's gonna cause more noise, there's gonna be jack brakes and everything going on.
That was my thought, yes.
Ten mile an hour increments, so we'll have to back roll, you know. The twenty-five would be in the small section, but then we have to, in, in ten mile an hour increments before that, so if we go clear back to the first quarter, forty-five, thirty-five, twenty-five, in the same way as the other way, or just go forty-five all the way from forty-two, then thirty-five, then twenty-five.
Is thirty-five safe now?
Oh, yeah.
Instead of dropping all the, uh, twenty-five, it was still accomplish, so we're trying to be, maybe that not require quick many times?
And I, I think twenty-five is, is, uh, it's kinda, you know, pie in the sky. No, no one's driving twenty-five miles an hour out in the country. I mean, it, uh, that's main street, speed limit stuff, it, uh...
Yeah.
No, no one will drive twenty-five, it's a waste of time.
Gotcha.
Need to tell you real deal, please.
Okay, what are the wishes of the board?
Well, how do you, I mean, do we wanna do it from that first corner all the way through?
I think it makes sense.
It's making it a little bigger. If you come off fifteen at forty-five, probably fifteen is on the right side of the screen, and forty-two that is raised, paved, is on the left side of the screen. You come off the paved route at forty-five, and you come off the strip steel at forty-five, reduce down to thirty-five, what, or twenty-five, or whatever number you guys give us, that's what we're gonna put up for signage.
Make the motion, we reduce speed for those two corners to thirty miles per hour, and give you the discretion of signage in both directions.
Do, do you maybe wanna go thirty-five, just because then it's, if we have to agree with the ten, that we...
Thirty-two point five, thirty-five is worth it.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I, I don't have a clue what, is it thirty-two point five? I'll, I'll second that at thirty-five, I'll...
Well, how many kilometers an hour is that?
It's a little over fifty, maybe close to fifty, yeah.
All my Canadian friends.
Yeah, uh, okay, uh, any additional discussion? Hearing them, go call vote.
Dennis, you will send me an email about what they just said, okay?
What, what? What they just said?
How did, how did you do it? How do you...
It will be forty-five, thirty-five. It will be posted from fifteen to forty-two, that's forty-five mile an hour down to thirty-five.
Perfect.
O.
Yes.
D.
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes, motion passed.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Uh, and I apologize, uh, I skipped climbing and going, so, uh, my bad. You guys are up.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Cory.
Morning again, Sam Miller, twenty twenty, uh, in front of you says S D dash zero zero one five dash two one, a rebar, uh, of lot two R and lot four in the Dean Junior subdivision. This, uh, is also one of the plans that was spoke of earlier on in the meeting, so, uh, this is just before you to request authorization for the chairman to sign the plat and met all the technical criteria for recognition.
Okay, one of the wishes of the board?
Make a motion to authorize chairman to sign.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, that's roll call vote.
Barry?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you, Dan. Well, alright. Getting back to, uh, order of the agenda. Um, Treasury Recorder, Patty, thank you.
Patty Oberchak, Treasury Recorder's office. Um, I'm here this morning to ask for permission to start a project in our office. Um, we should have a proposal in front of you from, um, U S imaging. And what this project would be is to index all our documents from patents through about nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, we currently have all our images on document file and on I Doc market, but we do not have all the index. And by that I mean, um, it's not physically entered, grantors and grantees and legal description. So this would be to physically enter all that information so that it's easily to search. Now you have to go to an index and look at the index to find the documents if you want, you can also look at the image. Um, from patents nineteen fifty-one, it's called a blind index. So it doesn't list any grantors, grantees, or it isn't by legal description, but you have to look at each book and page to figure out if this document is even interested. Um, the proposal is broke up into sections, so the whole thing is like, uh, six hundred and two thousand. But we would like to start, um, on page four, and that is to, um, fully index our deed records from patents nineteen eighty-nine. But hence the whole, it's on page four. It's, uh, page two, because that makes the most sense to us to start with and would be the most beneficial. That would be mostly for, um, first case source reference, other posts mineral records. Um, and the money for this would come out of our document preservation fund, which I did give you also the, um, North Port of Central for that, and it was created by three dollars is collected for every instrument that's reported. And there's currently just over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that. And, um, I also have the century code that shows what that money can be spent on, so this is exactly what it's meant for.
So the total you're looking at for right now is one twenty-five, five forty-four, ten, right?
Right, and that is somewhat of an estimate because, um, you can see on page six, it says excessive document indexing, they could charge more uh, for excessive indexing, meaning if there's more grantor, grantees above ten, it'd be twenty-five cents extra, as well as fifty cents for legal description for anything above that. So it is somewhat of an estimate, but with starting with this, this is something that I would like to continue and maybe, you know, do more of this proposal if it goes on, but that's for, like, starting.
You want to, would you feel okay with a blanket approval of the all of these goals?
Sure, yeah.
Cause this to me is a no brainer. This just extends your capability and makes you more user friendly and less labor intensive for you all. Uh, it's like a, it's a no brainer in my mind.
It's exactly what the money is meant for.
Um. Okay, one of the wishes of the board?
Would make, make motion to approve the, um, U S imaging quote. And, uh, is this something chairman needs to sign? Authorize chairman to sign?
Do you want to approve all phases or just individual things or?
Um, I guess my motion would be to approve their quote of all phases.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, that's roll call vote.
Cory?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
And Barry?
Yes.
Alright, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Busy.
Yeah.
That's great, it's.
Yeah. Okay. Our favorite Karen is next.
Almost feel like we should clap.
This day has been weird.
Alright, say what you want, what you want. Yeah, the only thing, uh, it looks like it's multiple things, but there's really only one thing, uh, at the, the Williams County Special Assessment Commission met last week to go over the special assessments that are in the very rich potential projects. One of the things that came up was that, that apparently there seems to be maybe some confusion out in the townships, and even with some of the engineers being hired by townships about really the purpose of the county special assessment commission, since the special assessment commission has been getting calls apparently from some engineers on their own, and then they meet and they do these special assessments and, you know, and the county really doesn't know anything about it, and so the special assessment commission recommended that a letter be drafted to the township, because the highway department's been sending out information to the township this week, and so uh, they recommended that we send out a letter to the township to explain to them how our county special assessment commission work, you know, when it can be used by the township for other people, and then also to sort of lay out the procedures that the township generally have to go through and have their own special special assessment district.
And this was discussed in finance, right, like, we're, we're creating kind of a nice little to-do list of how, how this works and, or, or am I?
I, I, I don't think you ever discussed this.
It is, uh, it's all in my mind.
Yeah, maybe that's something you want to discuss.
Well, it's, it would make a lot of sense to have a nice flow chart with easy to follow rules and descriptions of how this works, and, and that sounds kind of like what you're doing anyway, but.
Yeah, so I, I did, I, I did draft a letter and then also had been working on, we had been working on sort of like a, a summary of, of, of what, of the requirements that township has to go through anyways, with, uh, Julie and Chrissy on that, and so I just kind of shorted up a little bit, and so I drafted a letter, I, uh, uh, I, so I wanted to present to you, because it was the special assessment commission that wanted a letter, and so I wanted to present it to you, and you should have a copy of the letter, so I don't know Norm Hanson, who's the chairman of the special assessment office, if you want this word to sign off. And I also want to let you know that one other thing that I did add to the letter that's probably not in the letter that you have is in there, I said that if they wanted to use the county special assessment commissioner, if they wanted to get approval from this board for a special assessment, that they needed to contact Dennis. So, yeah, so now the special assessment commission now knows that if they get calls from any township or any engineer, they tell them to call Dennis, so, yeah, so that we got everything, you know, in the proper order really. So I didn't know if you're okay with sending out this letter, and that would be one thing. Are you okay with sending out this letter, and two, do you want to sign off on it, is okay if I just e-sign? I mean, I already talked to the chairman, he's okay with me, you just did e-sign on there, so.
Makes sense, me, to have Norm turn it up.
Okay.
And it's already there, his permission to put these things around there, perfect.
You can make a motion to that.
Yeah, I, I would like a motion to send out the letter under Norm's good nature, so.
Oh.
Norm Hanson, Norm Hanson.
Oh.
The special assessment commission.
Okay, we have a motion back where you have to.
All second.
Alright, and votes accepted, so any discussion? Hearing none, that's roll call vote.
Steve?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Okay.
And Barry, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay. Committees and boards, Tri County, Economic Development, T D D, um, Main Street, D O, Regional Council, who's handling that?
I just put, I just put in your package because I got it. And so just if you know of anybody, um, comments or anything on this.
Doesn't look like it.
Looks good.
Yeah. Looks good. Okay.
I'm going now.
Give a neck confession on this, I'm just eating effort. It just, it just seems like I just drank it and out of, you know.
This is spring breeze.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, very well.
We need that monkey with the symbol crashing. I think we have it.
Yeah.
I'll just point out that part of the redo of the audio and the technology is that Richard and I are working together, we're gonna review some of the furniture up front. We're having lived in this space for three years or more. We, at this point, in a similar way, we realize it's too small and people can't function. People have been trying to bend over and share a mic over here, so we're gonna work our way through some of those things, given the process.
That's drafted.
Um, I'm requesting permission to fill three positions and all of them are gonna have a little comment to go along with them. Barry, I did know you did this document when I realized you weren't at some meeting.
That's no problem.
Survey technician, this is a position that we didn't budget for, because we didn't recognize that you were gonna have the need. We have an employee who serves in the National Guard who will be called up for probably a year of service in twenty twenty-one. You're gonna hear me talk about this, we also have someone who works in the jail who will be called up for service in twenty twenty-one. Now, until they get their final information, it's always hard to know exactly when they're gonna go and for sure how it's gonna play out, but in both of these cases, we're gonna need to have somebody to fill the slot for the period of time in which they're absent. And in both departments, we're gonna ask to fill the position with someone who we would consider permanent and benefited, so that we can have some stability for the human being we hire and for the folks that are left behind to do the work, and through attrition and some, um, some other creative distribution of work when our National Guard member comes back, will accommodate, we have a long-term plan for making this, I'll work in both departments. So in this case, you see that on the far right column of this report, I am tentatively sort of crossing out one of these heavy equipment operator positions that we budgeted, because that's where we're getting the money within the budget for this position. And of course, I've worked closely, we and Dennis have talked through their needs, what we're going to do. We'd like to bring this person on relatively soon, have them helping through the busy summer season and getting some training, and, and be ready to fill in the slot while we have the absence. The second position is our facilities director position. I don't know if you all know, but Richard and his wife will be relocating out of the area. He's been good enough to give us a pheromone of notice. Uh, he thinks it won't be until early summer when he's actually leaving, but, but we know that it took some time to fill the position the last time, and so we'd like to advertise now. And of course, the longer that a new director can be with Richard, learn, there's lots of buildings and lots of people and lots of details to get started on.
Can we just deny that one right now?
Um, I just talked to the wife about that, but yeah.
No, I'm not up for that, but.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're all disappointed to see Richard go. Uh, he and I worked together on lots of things, including all this furniture and, and lots related to buildings himself. He's been a great person, but they have a new estate investor ahead.
He doesn't like the warm weather though.
I know, he always says he likes the cold, but they're moving south. Uh, and then finally, we have who has indicated she'll be moving out of the area, it looks like late summer. And because it is difficult to fill the state's attorney positions, and because we have, we have the town's position still open and we're advertising right now, like, to fill this one a little early if we have the opportunity to do so. And, and we do have money in the budget, because we had an empty position for the whole first quarter, to be able to cover that. We'll get people trained up, boy, if we had a couple of months where we had not really an extra attorney, but, but we had full staff plus a little help, that should be good for departments that has spent a lot of time in this over the last year. So, so I'd ask permission for all three of those to be approved today.
Yeah, you want to include the seasonal or part weeds and stuff?
Yes, certainly, we haven't asked you for permission to fill those, it's just a given that those departments have some money in a budget, and, and of course, it seems to be that it, they, they fill a few and, and most they fill all season, so there's to be open and, and kind of, uh, fluid. So we have those open, I put that there just so that, you know, they're, they're out in the world.
Make a motion to approve all three of the positions.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, that's roll call vote.
Oh?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Yeah. Motion passed.
That's all I have for you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that.
Park quarter nine thirty.
Yeah, park quarter nine thirty, and we will adjourn.